Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, March 3rd, 2025. Roll call.
Chairperson Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Bragachnik?
Here.
Commissioner Petrangelo?
Here.
Commissioner Corholios?
Here.
Let the record also show that ex-official Pat Green and Tina Glad are in attendance, as well as our community development coordinator, Betsy Olivati. Number two, approval of the minutes. Approval of Planning Commission minutes for February 18th, 2025. No corrections, additions, or deletions, if any.
So approved.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of the agenda. Acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes. No additions, deletions, or changes, if any. I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business. convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a zoning amendment request of Iron Range Plumbing and Heating Incorporated, 2205 First Avenue Hibbing, in the R2 1-4 family residential district and the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances on the subject property, 2214 Second Avenue West. Staff report.
Chair, the applicant is requesting to rezone the parcel that currently is Zoned R2 1-4 Family Resident, and he's requesting to rezone to C2A, which is our general commercial area. This would allow the property to be developed for the expansion of their current business, which is located adjacent to this property with an alley separating the two properties. There are portions of this city's general commercial zones located adjacent to and not directly on First Avenue, and also Howard Street and down in Park Edition. It appears that this would be a good fit for the area, requested to be rezoned, and would not directly have a negative impact on the residential zoning district that it is adjacent to. The applicant has met the requirements for submittal and application for a zoning amendment per Section 11.74 of the City Land Use Ordinance, and the applicant is in the audience.
Okay, can we have the applicant come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Bryce Wally and Craig Wally for Iron Range Plumbing and Heating, 2205 First Avenue.
Okay, you want to just give us a brief overview of what you're planning on doing here?
Our hopes is to change the current building, demlet, add a new warehouse and sheet metal building to add some space.
You bought the two properties in the back, right, of what's there? There's that abandoned house there on that street. You bought that? Did you buy the second one then too, or just that abandoned one?
Just the abandoned house and the parking lot.
And you're gonna be coming off of Second Avenue, right, as far as your garage doors, from what I'm looking here? Okay?
We may have an entrance off Second Avenue, but the garage doors will be primarily facing to the north off 22nd Street.
Oh, okay. All right. And it says you're doing a fabrication job. You have one right now, but you just need more space, is basically what it comes to.
Yeah, that's basically what it is.
I mean, the building looks really, I mean, from when I see the architecture, it looks to be really nice, so, I mean, I don't think there'll be a problem with anything. The only thing, we're both a little bit about on Second is, you know, that could be a really busy avenue at times, you know? It's not that it's gonna defect you or anything, but, you know, coming in and out of your, you know, Second Avenue, if you're on the street side, it probably isn't as busy, but, of course, you guys are on the street side, so, you got all your trucks there, which is okay. I'm glad to see that, that you have all those trucks. That means you're busy, which, which we like to see, so, but, I mean, I think it's pretty much a no-brainer that this ought to be added to our community, and we thank you guys for doing what you're doing, as far as getting involved in something like this. As far as the fabrication, I heard, I was talking to Gordon, he says you do have fabrication, oh, just need a bigger spot for it? Is that what it amounts to then?
Yeah, our original plan, or our original building that we're in now, has a small fabrication space for sheet metal work mostly, and we want to be able to expand that into a little bit, add a couple more employees and further that service.
That's all I have for him. No questions for him?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this, this time.
I would make a motion. Do we, do we have facts on this one?
No, we do have two things that we need to record.
Two letters?
Yeah, before we do that, we should read in the record here, we received two letters from people who couldn't attend tonight's meeting, but wanted to state their opinion on the record. On February 24th, 2025, the Building and Housing Department received a phone call from Lori Frankson. Ms. Frankson stated that she lives at 2216 Second Avenue West Hibbing, and that she had received a notification letter in the mail regarding the public hearing for Iron Range Plumbing and Heating zoning amendment request. Ms. Frankson explained that her property is directly next to the property owned by Iron Range Plumbing and Heating, and that she would be unable to attend the public hearing. However, she has no objections to the rezoning of the property. Another one is from John's Auto Body and Repair Center, to whom it may concern, in reference to the request by Iron Range Plumbing and Heating for the rezoning of the property, 2214 Second Avenue West Hibbing. We here at John's Auto Body and Car Repair fully support this action by the Hibbing Planning Commission. Iron Range Plumbing and Heating is a valuable asset to this community. Their history has repeatedly proven this. They have grown, adding multiple good-paying jobs for area residents. The employees are extremely respectful and accommodating to the people they deal with. It is vital to support the businesses that are here and established in Hibbing. The property right now is what would be considered blight. This action will undoubtedly add value to the entire neighborhood. We see no reason for this request to be denied, as it is for the betterment of the neighborhood and the city of Hibbing. If you have any questions regarding this opinion, feel free to contact us at the shop, as each and every one of us are wholeheartedly supports Iron Range Plumbing and Heating in this endeavor. And thank you, signed Cheryl Dan Kulovic.
Chair, we did check with the city attorney, and we don't have to do findings of fact on zoning amendments, as long as it's written into the record, the reason for the zoning request.
Okay.
Well, then I would make a motion that we approve this.
And I would gladly second that motion.
Here we go, motion is seconded on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This will come before the City Council on Wednesday, March 19th, so you'll want to be in attendance there too, in case they have any questions for you. Okay, next. convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a zoning amendment request of the city of Hibbing, 401 East 21st Street, in the R2 1-4 family resident district and the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances, on the subject property, parcel ID 139-0050-04676. Staff?
Chair, the applicant, in this case, is requesting to rezone the parcel that currently is Zoned R2, and is requesting to rezone to R3 multifamily dwellings. This would allow this property to be developed for multifamily use, such as apartments and townhomes. The adjacent properties include residential use of R2 1-4 family, and to the south is a multifamily apartment complex. The applicant has met the requirements for submittal and application for a zoning amendment of the City Land Use Ordinance, and the applicant is here.
Okay. Can I have the applicant come to the podium and speak your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mayor Haiduke and I will both be reporting to this tonight. So, Mayor, if you want to approach the podium, I'll go through my piece first, and then the mayor can speak. I'm going to talk generally, and then I can talk a little bit specifically. So, the City Council undertook a strategic planning initiative in April of 2023, which outlined core values and goals for housing. The first one is well-rounded, strong quality of life, quality housing stock that is affordable and accessible, and core strategy number five is safe, secure, and valued community, where everyone feels they are integral and involved part of the community, with a safe place to live and raise a family. Also, in 2023, the City Council and Hibbing Housing and Redevelopment Authority collaborated on a housing needs analysis, which identified a number of factors for the need for additional housing units and preservation of current housing units. I brought that housing needs analysis to you in the beginning of 2024. A few of the items that they noted were that there are low vacancy rates across all products and price points for rental units. Ninety-six percent of market rate units are at fifty percent of average median income, also identified as naturally occurring affordable housing, or NOAA. There is a lack of new rental housing driving that naturally occurring affordable housing to a high percentage of overall units. The lot inventory for new construction is sufficient for near-term only, remember, we talked about it, for one year, with ninety-three lots available, with around a hundred lot units per year needed through 2035. That there's a lack of entry level and move-up housing stock available, and that there's a need for sixty-plus new multifamily housing units. This demand for housing units through 2035 is equally divided between general occupancy housing at forty-eight percent, and age-restricted senior housing at fifty-two percent. And now I'll hand it over to Mayor Pete Haiduke to talk about the City Council's support for this application.
Good evening, everyone. The City Council understands there are current units in the city at need renovation and rehabilitation, to ensure that they remain viable for long-term and significant need for new housing units. Thus, we're pursuing several projects in the city to develop new units, both single-family and multifamily, as well as assisted organizations and businesses where we can to reinvest in maintaining housing in that's already existing. Which brings us to the request tonight before you. The Housing Redevelopment Authority of Hibbing has undertaken the development of Cop Cook Place in collaboration with the city to replace the aging Greenhaven complex. Phase one is a fifty-two unit house, and phase two will be forty-eight units of housing. I'm here tonight as the applicant for request to rezone parcels 139-0050-04676 for phase one of the HRA of Hibbing's project, and 140-0290-00619 for phase two. In addition, the state of Minnesota also understands issues and the needs for all types of housing, like single-family, market rate, workforce, affordable rental, and senior housing. This is a local, regional, state, and national issue. Just this past Wednesday, I was asked as Mayor of Hibbing by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota to testify in front of the Housing Finance and Policy Committee regarding Bill HF1143. This is a bill that will provide for additional infrastructure funding for communities in greater Minnesota. They've identified the needs of greater Minnesota and the roadblocks that can stop a project, so they're looking for additional funding for the needs of greater Minnesota, and I was very pleased to support that effort and to represent the city of Hibbing. So, that's what I have before you tonight regarding this housing project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, usually everybody's looking at me, so I guess I have to say something. Okay, I didn't really understand, Mayor, is what you were talking about, as far as greater Minnesota, as far as like the infrastructure, you're saying that the state has money that they would delegate to the city of Hibbing?
That is.
For infrastructure on the buildings? And, and is this Section 8 housing only, or is this market housing? How is this working?
This would be workforce housing, is what it would be. That's what is classified.
Okay.
And HF1143 is a bill that is being discussed in the House right now, and, and we're testifying to have, they identified this bill in the last session, but they didn't put money in it. So, we're asking, we're asking the legislature this year to ask for funding to be put in that. And the Coalition of Greater Minnesota is a coalition representing greater Minnesota, so rural communities. It's a whole different dynamic than urban Minnesota. What St. Paul, Minneapolis, and the suburbs face versus greater Minnesota, of course, have a different color. So, they understand infrastructure needs are huge, not only in the metro, but also in greater Minnesota. So, this is funding that would be for greater Minnesota. And I don't know what the money is, but I can guarantee you, if there's money available, we will be applying for that funding. Yes.
Mr. Chair.
So, when you say greater, I mean, we're not just talking St. Louis County, we're talking?
We're talking the whole state of Minnesota, anything outside metro and your metro suburbs.
Okay.
That is considered greater Minnesota.
All right.
Mr. Chair, members, we will be going after that workforce infrastructure grant from the 2023 legislative session for this particular project.
Okay.
So, that is also in the works as well.
This project that you're, that?
We're requesting rezoning.
Yes, okay. That's another thing I was gonna ask.
Yep.
Have you really went after that part of it already?
We also gone after John, just so you know, we went after minerals funding in the last legislative session, which we rewarded some funding for that for housing. So, we've been working diligently, leaving no stones unturned, looking for funding to help these housing projects move forward, because it is such an issue, not only regionally and locally, but nationally also.
So, just so the people of the city and audience would understand, this is for the infrastructure portion of it, and then the HRA and stuff would do the building portion?
The HRA got funding for the building structure. We want to get the infrastructure to the new site.
For the building to get ready for?
Yes. And anytime you extend infrastructure, it's a win-win for the city, because it allows other lots that might be able to be developed or access infrastructure. So, roads, water, sewer, electricity, gas, they're all important components for any economic development.
Okay. So, as far as this funding goes, Mayor, is this, is it set to go into this session then? Is that what you're saying?
Will be, it's being discussed.
It's been discussed, but it has not been approved yet?
No. Well, that is just funding we'd be going after, John. We, our minerals funding is in place already.
Okay.
So, but anytime other access or other grants or funding becomes available, we'll go after everything.
Okay. So, not just relying on the one thing?
Nope.
That's what I'm asking?
No.
Because, I mean, obviously, we know it can happen, right? I mean, I mean, we want to keep moving forward, which you guys have been working.
And answer to your question, the HF, the infrastructure funding that the state has, we will go after, but that will, that will not affect this project. If, if this project, we know is going forward with the 26.5, if it's approved with the HRA. We have money for infrastructure, but we will go after additional money for infrastructure, which just allows us to do additional projects.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members, the 26.5 million, I believe that's the right number, Jackie, has already been secured to construct the housing complex on the five-acre site. So, what the mayor's talking about is the additional commitment that the city has provided to the HRA, that the City Council has committed to a shovel-ready site, which includes that utility infrastructure for the HRA's project. So, they have secured the money to build the project. We are working with them to transfer the five acres, and then additionally bring the rest of the infrastructure to the site.
Any other questions?
So, on this, on the HRA, is that, is that ready to start within this next spring then, or this spring coming up? Is that the goal, to get that started? I mean, I know you went through some problems that you, you know, taken care of, obviously. So, when is this all moving forward, as far as your, see, you do have the funding for that?
Yes. Chair, member Petrangelo, the, they are looking to close this fall?
Okay.
And, and start that process. So, they're currently in the rest of the design phase and forming that up.
So, this is more, talking more engineering side of things for fall, possible breaking ground next year from spring, correct?
Our executive director of the HRA is here. I believe if you close in the fall, you'll break ground in the spring. Is that what the intention is? That's correct.
Okay. And then, was there any superfund money that's available for the cleanup site? Or are you guys getting that far east?
No, we will not be. There's a buffer zone in between that and the housing site.
Gotcha.
And we've been working with the MPCA to ensure that that is all, you know, well-done.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. I will say one thing, go blue jackets.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this? Can you come to the podium and speak your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Raleigh Hess. Our address is 525 West 41st Street. I'm here night, here tonight representing 525 West LLC, which is the company who owns the property, four acres immediately south of this project, also as the owner-operator of Hibbing Fabricators, the tenant of that site, long-term tenant of that site. And we're just here to speak in general support of the project and understand the need for housing in our area, as well as throughout the state. And we would just respectfully ask that, as this project moves forward, that considerations for fencing or landscaping be taken into account on that shared southern boundary of this property, to help keep the residents of the area safe and not intermingled with our industrial site that's immediately south of there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against us? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for this one. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this zoning amendment request.
I would second that motion.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda, which is actually the second part of this, convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider a zoning amendment request of the city of Hibbing, 401 East 21st Street, in the I-2 General Industry District and the Hibbing City Code of Ordinances, on the subject property, parcel ID number
Chair, the applicant is requesting to rezone this parcel that is currently Zoned I-1 Light Industry, and is requesting to rezone to R3 multifamily dwellings. This, again, would allow the property to be developed for multifamily use, such as apartments and townhomes. The adjacent properties include residential use and light industrial. This parcel is directly northeast of phase one that we just rezoned. The applicant, again, has met the requirements for submittal and application for a zoning amendment. The applicant is here. Betsy Olivati will represent the city.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so this second parcel is a four-and-a-half-acre parcel, was secured by the city from St. Louis County in a recent land auction, to allow for the phase two of the HRA's project to take place. On the current five-acre site that will suit phase one, with an R3 zoning designation, which allows a maximum of sixteen units per acre, we can put eighty units on that particular parcel. However, the replacement of the entire Greenhaven requires a hundred units total. So, therefore, to enable the project to have phase two, the second set of forty-eight units to be redeveloped, it made more sense to secure the second site of four-and-a-half acres, to allow for that phase two to take place, and keep within that R3 zoning designation to suit the neighborhood and the community at that site.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Why is it always talking to me? I, I, and basically, this is the second phase of what you're doing, and, but when you're at the housing project now, right now, you're gonna be knocking down some buildings over there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because, and so you're just replacing that with, obviously, what's going in, what you call the cop cook section now, whatever it is. And so, is that all gonna work out? In between, are you gonna have, is it, the people that are there gonna be able to move over to that section, or is it gonna be, how's that working? Explain that to me.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in case I need Jackie's assistance, I will refer that part to her. But yes, there are a hundred units of housing at the current site. The, right now, she's working to move fifty-two units to the five-acre site, and that's the first phase. Phase two is the forty-eight units of the rest of that housing development. The housing development currently that's there then will be demolished at this time. So, that will take place after all of the folks have been transitioned from the current Greenhaven to the new Cop Cook.
Okay, explain that also to me. Now, you're gonna demolish that area. Is that area gonna be used for anything then?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. You, you notice in the, in the report that the mayor and I gave tonight, it talks about the desperate need for new housing, and this is just replacement units, right?
Right.
It's a one-to-one replacement of the current.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct. So, as we free up land, then we will be building additional new housing units in those places. It just depends.
In those places where you're knocking down that building, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, because it just seems like we're all doing is digging, you know, A, and bringing it over to B, and making, not making any progress on that part of it.
This is correct, yes, and I, you know, that is the struggle that we have right now. So, we're trying to, number one, do, you know, additional new units, and I will probably be back in front of you for other zoning requests over the next six months. But right now, we're working to replace these units, to ensure that the folks that live there have, you know, viable, regular units for housing, and then demolish the prior units, so.
Hi, members of the commission. I am Jackie Prescott, the director of the HRA. I just wanted to speak to what Betsy had brought up. We had looked at renovating the units there. The issue was the needs were so great that it would never support occupied rehab, so we were advised to rebuild somewhere else. So, we have looked at several options. This wasn't just, you know, a quick decision. This was almost a decade in the making to come to this decision. So, and we've been working with HUD and the Special Application Center to move this project forward.
I, like I said, I just wanted to, like, obviously, the buildings can be repaired, repaired, so you're knocking them down and doing this other project. But then also, like I said, you know, if you, you are eventually going to do something with that property to make it part of the HRA again, right?
Not necessarily. We're looking at different options in accordance with the housing study.
What's a different option? Explain that to me.
Could be potentially to sell it to the city, for the city to decide, or to work with the city. We're working hand-in-hand with the city to determine what to do with that land. So, potentially looking at possible land swaps. These are conversations we've had with HUD. So, we're looking at changing, we're not necessarily keeping it strictly on the workforce side. We're looking at all options. No decisions have been made. I know there'll be hearings and conversations moving forward with the City Council, the residents of the community, and city leaders.
I'd just like to say it's gotta head, not, you know?
Agreed.
Yeah, you know, it, I understand why you're doing it, don't get me wrong, but I'd like to see it go forward instead of staying lateral, you know? And I, I just presumed maybe... And I, I just presumed maybe, and I didn't know, that I just figured, well, they must be maybe tearing it down and maybe eventually putting something back up there so that they could replace that housing. So we would be, you know, and, you know, I, I don't want to see anybody go homeless or anything, you know, so.
My understanding is the plan will be to have replacement housing there. Just what type has not been determined. That's the goal of the HRA, the board, and conversations with the city, what they're looking at as well.
This first phase you're looking at, you're closing this fall. So the second phase, you still have to secure the funding to move forward for that. So that's probably a little ways out yet?
Well, we're, we plan to, um, submit an application this July for Phase Two. We'd like to just keep it moving. So potentially, um, if, when funded, then we'll move on to Phase Two. So one will be finishing up while the other one's starting, essentially. That's our plan.
Fairly quickly, right?
Yes.
The same time I keep moving along. Then as you move the residents out for Phase One, will then that be the time you look at redeveloping that property right away?
I think we might have to wait until Phase Two.
Phase Two.
Phase Two is complete.
Okay. So you can move the whole parcel out before?
Yeah, we will move those residents right away, that, from the first phase immediately. Um, and then, you know, kind of look at funding to get them torn down. But yes, um, we won't be ready for development until all of the units are removed.
Which gives us the time to consider what makes sense for that part of the community.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
May I can ask you this question? Are we ever looking at, you know, in a section where we have market housing? People who are, I mean, like a real life, which, you know, we've had, took a couple of them here. People that are selling their houses in Hibbing and are looking to move into an apartment, not, you know? And I'm not saying anything's wrong with the HRA, don't get me wrong about that section. But what I'm saying, are we looking at something at that down the road? That would, you know, somebody has a house, you know, suddenly they, they don't want to do the shoveling anymore. They don't want to do the lawn keep, they don't, and so they, who are looking for an apartment type of thing, you know? And it seems like, you know, um, what we had there, but obviously, they're full. And they're always seem to be full.
Yes.
You know? So are we looking on something like that, land for something like that?
Mr. Chair, Member Patrangelo? Um, yes, so we have been actively pursuing housing projects all over the city. And I have connected with the company that developed the two real lives that we have here in town. They do have a waiting list, but they are no longer in the development business. So I am, um, working with another developer who's looking at something similar, trying to put together a project. So yes, we are actively pursuing all projects, including one like that.
Okay, none? Another question. Obviously, um, Hibbing now has the, um, the downtown there, the Fort Twelve Bar and going all the way down to the end. Is there gonna be? Other new business?
Yeah. Let's take that, I'm running that part. It's not permanent, it's. Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this zoning amendment request? Can you come to that?
Where are we at at this point? Are we anywhere near?
Can you come to the podium and state your name and address?
I'm just wondering if we're anywhere near the?
Say your name, Larry.
Wow. My name's Larry Warple. I live at two fifteen West Thirty-ninth. And I wonder if we're talking about this spot or aren't we there yet? If you can't quite understand where we're at by sitting back here.
So the spot that you had called about for rezoning? About the railroad?
Right.
Yes.
Is that what this is?
Yeah, yes.
And what about the wetlands and the contamination wells and all the pollution that's on that area? What happens to that?
So on, on these two parcels, they're rezoning the parcel only. Um, before any development, there will be wetland delineation or the, you know, soil testing on these two parcels, um, that the city owns.
And the only reason I ask that is when the colony added on to their garage, and I was working there at that time, the pollution there was horrible. And they cleaned up enough of it to build and they left the rest. And if, when the Hibbing Tribune was there during the, the building of it, a reporter by the crick, by Ranger Chevrolet, fell through the sod and he was oil-soaked up to his knee. That was all let go, nothing was cleaned up, nothing was done. And that's, to my understanding by my neighbors, that was a massive area back there for that asphalt plant. They actually gonna clean this up or are you gonna let people live on that?
Well, that, that is not part of these two parcels.
Well, I mean, you're right across the ATV track, there's a pollution well.
Where the gas plant was? Is that what you're talking?
Yeah, it used to be an asphalt plant before that.
And, yes. Yeah, neither, so that spot is separate from these, uh, four acre and, uh, five acre parcel.
Well, it just shows in that little map that I got in the mail that it was right up to the ATV trail in kind of a odd shape. And I just thought, if you're going all the way to the ATV trail to rezon this, there is, there's three, four wells there. And there's, was a sign on that gate right across from my garage that said, MPCA, keep out. Um, I'm just curious if this is.
Mr. Chair.
What's happening here? It's gonna be a, a mess for sure.
Yeah, the MPCA does have, um, they're in contact with the Public Utilities on the old gas plant that was, uh, demoed. Not part of these two parcels at all. Um, and none of the development from all the meetings we've been in with, uh, HRA are gonna take place anywhere on, on the parcel that, uh, PUC owns.
It's separate land.
Yeah, it just, you know, I'm just looking at that little piece they had outlined on that map.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's right across the ATV trail from where I live. And it's like, there's three wells there that they've been checking, and there's more farther in. And it doesn't really say. It just shows that slice and it's there where them wells are. And, you know, it wasn't cut back at all that, oh, it'd only be this far or whatever.
Member, uh, Members of the Commission, we have been actively, um, collaborating with the Hibbing Public Utility on this particular project that Mr. Larry is referring to. And that will be, um, in the legislative session next year, the next legislative session. So probably in twenty-twenty-six for bond funding to clean up the parcels that he's talking about. So those are a little bit further away, south and east, from where they, they will be building. There's a buffer in between the current lots where they'll be building and where that site is. And they will be doing cleanup, um, after the next legislative session. So they've assured us that the, where that, um, groundwater is will not touch these two current lots. So we've been working very closely with the Hibbing Public Utilities and the MPCA on this to ensure that what we're doing is, is done well and right.
And it just, you know, it was only the last, when they resurfaced our road around the corner, they finally fixed some of the water runoff problems we had. And they put a culvert back there to go into the wetlands instead of having to go over the ATV trail, which flooded out my neighbors. Now that's semi-corrected. But now if you're, that map shows that as part of the redevelopment, what happens, you know, to the drainage and the wetlands and, and everything? You know, it's just kind of a, before you just go, oh, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. And then somebody's flooded out or, or you're living on polluted dirt. And like I say, I saw it at the colony and it's still that way. It's just kind of a question to me.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, um, we are working with LHB Architects. We have Bronn Intertech doing the geotech and the Phase One, Phase Two. And we are also working with Woodset, um, design and engineers to do the wetland delineation and all of that work. So it will be well-designed away from that site so that the concerns that are being expressed here tonight have been addressed.
You know, it'd be nice if these things were corrected beforehand. And then they went for a rezoning or something. But once it's rezoned and all of a sudden there's buildings there and how good did it get? Did it end up like the colony? Like I'm saying, I worked there then, and that wasn't a very nice fix at all for what they did there. And is that what somebody's gonna be living on?
The buildings are a separate property. That's what we're trying to tell you. It's not the same property. They're two separate. We're only rezoning the property where the buildings are going. What she's talking about, Betsy's talking about as far as the cleanup, that is a separate parcel of property. It's not part of this.
And only concerns I have is once it's rezoned and if that's part of it, then it's rezoned, so then you could. And it's kind of like going to see these people for a building permit and going, I need a building permit. For what size building? Well, I don't know, I'll tell you when I go to build it. I just need the permit. You know, that's kind of what I'm trying to ask here is, is, is it gonna be down in that area? Screw up the wetlands, cleaned up nice? Or will it be farther back? And if it's gonna be farther back, I just don't understand the picture where it came right to the ATV trail. That's all I'm asking.
So the picture that you got in the mail outlined the entire parcel of property. I didn't, the letter I sent in the mail, I have no idea where on that property the building's gonna go. The pro, the letter is to show you, you're in the neighborhood of the property that this is gonna be rezoned. That's all the letter did. So we sent you the map to show you what we're talking about because the property doesn't have an address, so I couldn't just list an address for you.
Yeah.
But I have no way of knowing where on that five acre parcel the buildings are gonna go because they haven't figured that out yet.
And, and I see what you're saying. I just thought if it was a.
So it's just to let you know.
Parcel that was.
That whole parcel is involved.
Closer up toward Fifth in that polluted wetlands area. Wasn't included in that slice, then I probably wouldn't have thought much of it. But when it gets right down and it shows it right to the ATV trail, it's like, boy, you're on top of pollution wells and, and the drainage that finally kind of works for my neighbors that had flooded garages and stuff 'cause the water had nowhere to go. And if that gets filled in or built over, they're right back where they started.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission?
It's just a question.
The zero zero six one nine parcel is not involved and neither is the, um, zero four six seven six parcel. Neither of those are involved in the site that the MPCA is monitoring. So they are nearby, but they are not involved.
So I guess if something was gonna be in.
What, could you say your, your address again? You rattled it off so fast I couldn't catch it.
Two fifteen West Thirty-ninth Street.
Two fifteen West Thirty-ninth Street?
Yep, I'm on the corner of Thirty-ninth and Third Avenue.
Okay.
And that's just.
Yeah.
Something that I guess if this did, does get rezoned, and I guess if it's farther back a little bit and it don't interfere with that stuff, I really don't care. But I guess if in the future, if that was gonna be built on, it would be nice to.
I have some things I want to say. And, uh, looking at this one map, I can actually see the corner of our pole yard, our old poles in this map. And I don't know if that's part of this I-one that we're trying to rezon.
No.
So, um, 'cause the highlighted lines that I have include that property.
They do not. Okay. Yes, the property that we're rezoning does not include that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, I just, let it go with that. And I just wanted to clarify that 'cause I have.
And the other thing I wanted to say is I know that this has been a, kind of a thumb up with the PUC trying to get this cleaned up. They've spent a lot of money trying to maintain it. They've been trying to go after legislation for years and years and years and years. I've been working for sixteen, seventeen years with the PUC and it's been on our radar of trying to get this property cleaned up and taken care of. This is the first time that I've actually seen some sort of motion or direction to try to get this property cleaned up in the future. Just to let you know.
You know, I've been at my place for almost fifty years. And my neighbor grew up there. And he said back in the day, he goes, that, that tar, and that was a foot deep. And, and you'd go play and there's little kids and you get hanged on by your folks 'cause you weren't supposed to be there and you did. And when they cleaned it up, they just hauled fill it and buried it. So he goes, that's what's in there. And.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Members of the Commission, to George's point, we have a great partner in the MPCA now going forward. And we've been really pleased with the attention and consideration and collaboration that we've seen from them. So we are, at the city, super excited to move forward with them as a partner on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Warple.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for this time.
I would so move to approve this request.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last on the agenda then is open discussion.
Nothing for me.
We'll, we'll let that one go, Becky.
Lot of stuff in the moving wheels here.
Betsy, is there anything that you're currently working on that you want to disclose property-wise in the future for City Hibbing that, that could possibly be coming up?
Sir, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, we are working on four different significant housing projects at this time. Um, the one came before you tonight on these two parcels. We have Highland Hills, which we've talked with you a little bit about in the past. It is currently zoned appropriately. But we do have another community meeting coming up on March twenty-fourth from six to seven thirty, again, right at the Memorial Building. So that's Monday, March twenty-fourth from six to seven thirty in the veterans' area at the Memorial Building. And the concept designs that were put before city council at the February nineteenth meeting um, will be in the room at that time. And, and the community will have a chance to weigh in on those and give some input on the, on the concept designs. There are four of them. The city council has thrown out, um, Concept D, which had seventy-some units. They're really looking to stay in between that forty and fifty units on that particular acreage. Um, the HRA's project is the second one. We are also working diligently with our local housing trust fund to seek some matching dollars for that particular, um, fund to do additional housing projects in the city. Um, we are also working on the four hundred block redevelopment project. Right now, it is currently appropriately zoned for the projects that are coming before us. But, um, we have one project that may want to do a little bit of, uh, an additional floors. So then that would need to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission because currently it's zoned for sixty-five feet, um, in our downtown. And if they want to do that additional fifth floor, it would require a zoning amendment. So we'd have to talk to you about that. Um, but that is not before us at this time because it's still firming up. So look for a project coming on the four hundred block. And then the final project is the EDA, um, did secure the Jefferson School Site, which is twenty-eight ten Diane Lane, and is looking to redevelop that project into housing as well. Sort of a continuation of the Gracier neighborhood that already exists there. Um, but we will have to do some rezoning work on that as well because it's a planned unit development specifically for the bakery and the childcare that has existed there in the past. Um, so to do anything different there, including housing, will require a zoning amendment and probably, um, some replating, et cetera. So I've been working with our, um, building official, Pat Green, on that. And that will come before you in the next few months as well. So look for those to come your way.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
John's gonna answer all your questions.
Anything else?
I would so move to close.
I'll second that.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.